Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We're here for a city council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. We'll start the meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Artstrom.
Here.
Leifenberg. Roberts.
Here.
Strowman.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Drew.
Evans.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Pastor Randy Phipps, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Excellent. What a joy to be here and have the opportunity to pray a blessing over our city. A city where we are all actively engaged in life. Life is good and God is good. So join with me as I give him praise. Thank you, Jesus, for the opportunity we have today. Once again, we look towards you, the author and finisher of our faith, Lord God. Thank you for your Holy Spirit's presence. Thank you for leading and directing over this city, Lord God, over this council, Lord God, over our mayor, Lord God, over our city officials, Lord God. I pray blessings. Thank you for their lives. Thank you for how they live their lives, Lord God, that they would make wise decisions in this land of opportunity, Lord God. We would choose the very best. And I pray tonight, Lord God, that we would find ourselves once again as your children, saying, "Your will be done on this earth as it is in heaven." Thank you for giving us great leadership today. In your name we pray. Amen. Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now for the adoption of the agenda. Will there be a motion from the council? Motion to adopt by John Roberts and a second by Lance Lehman. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item one on the agenda is a very brief and dull presentation from Ron Jeffries from the Black Hill Stock Show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate a few moments of your time tonight. Just wanted to welcome you to this year's 64th Annual Black Hill Stock Show and Rodeo. It kicks off officially January 28th. But if any of you are Yellowstone fans, they've got cutting horse competition and quarter horse show is going on right now at the James Cursted Event Center. They started last Saturday with THAR's team sorting, and it'll be going on through Thursday. And so we'll have activities out there throughout, from last Saturday until the end of the show on the 5th of February. Wanted to point out a couple of things on our agenda coming up. First off, Friday is at nine o'clock, we have a ribbon cutting. And one of the big expansions this year, well, first of all, no big surprise, the big expansion is we have a brand-new arena at the Monument, the Summit Arena. All the Rodeo Rapid City events that were previously in Barnett Arena are now being moved into the new Summit Arena. Barnett Field House is being repurposed. There'll be a warm-up area back by the bucking chutes. And then the south end, where you just walk in the glass doors, that'll be our new youth livestock show arena. And so we'll have three different days of cattle for youth in that facility. We'll also have two days with sheep and goats in that facility. So we're excited to really expand the Black Hill Stock Show this year with the inclusion of a number of youth events. In addition to that, we will have the 4H youth days take place at the summit or at the monument on the last weekend as well. So we're really excited about the number of kids and families that we're going to be able to bring to Rapid City and accommodate at this year's Black Hill Stock Show. A number of events that you're used to seeing, professional rodeo by Sutton Rodeo, there'll be a ranch rodeo, there'll be Bronx for Breakfast, and sheepdog trials, et cetera, et cetera. There is one new event, and Mayor, I'd like to personally invite you to this one. On Monday at 5:30, we have a celebrity showmanship class, where each of our celebrities get to select an animal from the nursery and then bring it out and show it, as our youth livestock exhibitors would also do. So please put that on your agenda. We'd love to have you participate. No pressure at all, but it's here publicly announced that you're invited to attend and participate. We're excited about it this year. You know, there's been a lot of good things that have come out of being open and operating throughout the last couple of years. We have really been placed on the map in the stock show world, both from adding youth activities and from being operational throughout this entire last two years. Our horse sale went from a million dollars in sales two years ago, and last year it went, or two years ago, went to 1.2 million, and last year it went to 1.9 million. And it's because of a number of shows that didn't take place, big horse sales, we really drew the eyes from a lot of areas, and I think that's what's adding to a lot of the buzz coming into this year. People became familiar with us. And so they put the Rapid City, Black Hill Stock Show, and Rodeo Rapid City on their agenda for items to come see. We want to extend an invitation. I did include some passes for you to get into any of the events that take place at the James Cursted Event Center. Most of the events are free, but there are a few ticketed events, but we'd like you to come back and experience some of those events. And as I said, the Yellowstone Cutting Horse Competition is going on tomorrow morning again. They were here yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And then we'll go into horse show stuff. With that, a great thanks to the job that the Monument staff has done in getting prepared. Of course, with any new venture, there's all kinds of new things that have to be worked out. Craig and his staff did a phenomenal job in putting things together and allowing us this chance to expand, and we're very grateful for that. And I think you'll be happy with the results when you come to this year's Black Hill Stock Show and Rodeo. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ron. All right, now for general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express items or concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. And action will not be taken at this meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council. We have one speaker request for general public comment tonight, and that's from Chuck Henry. And all the speakers tonight, we'll have three minutes, and you can watch these lights up here to see how you're doing.
My computer. I've been talking to Richie, because I'm looking at helping with the homeless situation and that. And right now, I'm currently trying to get ahold of Tara at Volunteers with America and kind of work with them on it since they're starting to do something. And you guys are going to approve a contract with them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that'll bring general public comment to a close, and we'll start off the agenda with non-public hearing items, two through 48, and we'll open public comment on items two through 37. So we have a speaker request for a few of these items, and that's Chuck Henry on items 13, 15, 22, and 27.
Okay. Oh. Again, on 13, it's talking about one access. I was going to talk to Jason tonight, but he's not here. Again, it's just going to be one access to the buildings, and it's going to be over 40 units. But when you get an engine in there and the truck in there, and if it's crowded parking, they're going to have a time of their life trying to get those out of there. On there, it's, I hear about restabilized Meadowbrook drainage. Well, Robbinsdale Drains needs to be taken care of, because there's a few times I've heard, kind of on my, when I was able to hear the fire department, they've been responding to people that were kids. There's one that a kid fell in the drain dish and somehow got out. I think he went underneath in the one of the culverts. On code enforcement, I've done this a few times. I've reported people not shoveling their locks. And all over, there's businesses that don't do that, and I've seen it. And that is awful slippery for people trying to do it. And if they're on wheelchairs, they're not going to be able to make it through it. Again, I want to talk about Station One. Again, it's so small. There's one time I was in there talking to a friend of mine who was mobile medic, but he retired ahead of it. His office was in a closet. In a closet, that's how bad it is. And then we're starting to see more female firefighters and paramedics. They need their own locker room and showers. Right now, they got to bolt the door if they're in there to take a shower, so the guys don't get in there. And again, on Southwest Precinct, it's needed. It's needed. And people out there don't think they need one out there because they don't want one, but when officer needs come from their assigned area, like up north, just to answer a call out there, it's going to take them a while getting out there, and they're going to complain about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll close the public comment period for these items, and we'll start off consent items two through 37. Does the council have any items that they wish to pull off for separate consideration? Go to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to pull items nine, 12, 13, 14, and 17. Nine, 12, 13, 14, 17. Thank you.
Okay, Jason Solomon.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Pat pulled one of the items I was going to pull, so we're good.
Okay. Any other council members? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent with the exception of nine, 12, 13, 14, and 17. Motion made by Lehman and second by Pat Jones. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, approve change order number one to mainline contracting for Elkvale Lift Station Gravity Main and Force Main upgrades for an increase of $237,775. Go to Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of item nine, and if I get a second, keep the floor, please.
Second by Jason Solomon. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. At Public Works, we heard a great explanation as to why the increase is so much on this project. And if I could turn to our engineering department to, if you could briefly give us that explanation that you did at Public Works last week, please, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this project right here is for our Elkvale Force Main project that we have going on right now. And there was a process in this project where we have our pipe bedding, which is usually incidental to our unit price per foot. And through this process, it was determined with a few different notes that that was not necessarily as clear as it could be in there. So we decided to, when the contractor was bidding this, as it was not included in the project. And this change order actually puts the pipe bedding as incidental to the per-unit price per foot of the pipe. This is actually something that would normally be included with the project. This is not any kind of problems that we have encountered with the project, but more so something that would have been included with the project in the first place.
So this, it's a necessary item that will be necessary to complete the project and just wasn't included in the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of item nine. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, authorize staff to advertise bids for trenchless sanitary sewer rehabilitation, Jackson Boulevard, estimated cost $480,000. Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve item 12 and keep the floor if I can get a second.
Second by Roberts. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So we learned about what trenchless sanitary sewer is. And again, would you please explain to us, talk about trenchless sewer, because that was a term that was very foreign to me, and it was very exciting to learn what that was all about, because I don't think people necessarily think of trenchless when it comes to digging trenches. If you would, please.
Yeah, so the normal method of construction is an open trench cut, where we disturb a lot of soil and get in the way of a lot of the traveling public. This trenchless technology allows us to minimize that open cut and have a minimal disturbance to the entire project. There is, you know, a couple of holes that are dug between or utilizing manholes to use this technology to provide these improvements that are necessary for us to continue utilizing this infrastructure. And this is just another example of how technology or advancements in are leading us to better projects, minimizing our impact on the traveling public.
And it takes a commitment of our engineering staff to stay on top of this new stuff and learn it, and be willing to take on the idea of new technology and try and things differently. And so that is to be not only acknowledged but appreciated. And also the fact that when you folks do planning, you do keep in mind to disrupt as little as possible. It's not like you want to try to mess up people's lives. Part of the planning of projects does include, how much is this going to disrupt people? And we try not to. And I think that was to be commended as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor for approval of item 12. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, approve a request from Tony Marshall for an exception to allow more than 40 dwelling units along Golden Eagle Drive with only one point of access. Per section 2.6 of the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual, a single access can only serve 40 dwelling units unless an exception is approved by city council. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve item 13 and keep the floor, please, if I can maintain a second.
Second by Darla Drew. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So item 13, if I may have Vicki, if I may direct my questions to her.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. So in reading the documents on this one, it appears that this is a request to go from 40 units to 45 units within one single area. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then did that require any kind of a continuation plan or plan development along with that? Or was that all that's going to need to be done with that?
That would be all that's needed at this time. If this is approved, Tony will submit a plot to create these lots that you see down adjacent to Katrin Boulevard. It is along the same entry road as Velagio at Golden Eagle. So what the loggies had previously plotted goes towards that 45 number. We ensured that there are turnarounds at Golden Eagle, Montebello Lane, and again at the end of Velagio Lane. The fire department did look at this, and they did not oppose the exception.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of item 13. All in favor? Oh, Jason Solomon, let's go backwards.
Thank you. May I direct a question to Vicki Fisher, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
So Vicki, and it's too bad Fire Department's not here, but they didn't oppose it, is what you said. So does that mean they support it? I mean, or is it, or is there some neutrality going on? I just want to make sure that, we're very cautious about single entry. So I want to make sure that we're being responsible here.
Mr. Mayor, so in this instance, there is adequate fire flows to this property. Typically, in order to support it, you would see a stipulation that said they had to enter into a covenant agreement to provide fire suppression systems on any of those homes. I did not. I did not see that, that was attached to this. And so as a part of reviewing the plat, the Fire Department indicated that they could support this layout even if an exception was provided. And may I point out, this is actually a Public Works item. So I am kind of winging it, but I was the one reviewing the plat. So probably know a little bit more than Ben does on it.
Well, did you want to add anything to this, then? Mayor? All right. Talk to Public Works.
Well, this item in particular, there's no stipulations because actually there's a little bit of an interpretation on dwelling. And it's our interpretation that it's actually below 40. So we count it as 39, but it's with the lots that are on there aren't actually all dwellings. Multiple lots are owned by the same, same property owner. So we didn't necessarily feel that the approval with stipulations was warranted for this one. So we're actually, yeah, under 40.
Just want to make sure, we're always very cautious. But if, but if you all have looked into this and you're saying, this is good, I feel good about it. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, I believe, for Item 13. All in favor of approval of Item 13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Item 14, approve request from KTM Design Solutions for an exception to allow more than 40 dwelling units along Clarkson Road with only one point of access. Back to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My concern with this one is a little bit deeper than the other one. This one, it said it's going to allow for 92 units, if I read the documents correctly, instead of 40. And that seems like an awful lot. So if we could get some explanation from Vicki and/or Ben, whoever would like to take that one, I think we definitely need some help on that one.
Mr. Mayor?
Vicki Fisher.
We collaborated. So again, they are, they did propose a plat that would subdivide this property that does put it into a large number amount. In this case, the Fire Department did recommend that if this is approved, that they enter into a covenant agreement that would require fire suppression systems in all of the residential structures and that the building material be fire retardant as well as the landscaping design. So with that, knowing that this is a large parcel, the underlying zoning supported it, we felt that was the compromise.
So would residential houses have to have fire suppression sprinklers, et cetera, as well?
Yes, this is zoned residentially. The only development allowed would be residential.
So it's all going to be residential? And when they build, they'll be required to have sprinklers that are up to whatever that code has to be?
Correct. And note that the plat is only to split a property. The fact that the number is 92 is because that's how many homes, there's currently 91 homes on Clarkson. They're adding another lot. So the exception is to allow 92 with one point of access. They're not actually adding 92 lots.
So it's almost been in place now as it is, and it's worked? So this is just an adjustment, kind of like within what we've been talking about earlier? I'm sorry.
Correct. And even the county Fire Department sees the benefit if we are going to get fire suppression systems in these residential structures for any new development on these two lots, if we were to grant the exception.
Who makes sure that the sprinklers are put in the homes when they're being built throughout the process?
This is a subdivision improvement, as far as we're concerned, because we don't issue the building permit. We do file covenant on the property. And the homeowners have been diligent in following that covenant as they're securing those building permits through the county.
So they, they do it, but does anyone, is that part of the inspection process, perhaps? Do those have to be there?
The fact that the city and the county share a track-it system that we both utilize for building permits, we put that into that software system. They pull it up when they go to issue the building permit, similar to us, and that requirement is noted.
I just, as we have all learned, as we go through this process of learning how to do good work on this council, this topic is extremely important. And I appreciate the work that's done by the Fire Department, engineering, planning, et cetera, to make sure that when we do approve these, that they're done for the right reason. So I'll move approval of Item 14.
Okay. Let's, we need someone else to make a motion anyway, so.
Oh, yeah.
Jason Solomon makes a motion to approve stipulations.
Second.
Second by Greg Strowman. So this is for Item 14. We have a motion on the floor for approval with stipulations. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, authorize Mayor and Finance Director to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Volunteers of America Northern Rockies for Community Co-Response Services. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 17 and keep the floor, please.
Second by Richie Nordstrom. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So we continue to add services to help our homeless and our underserved population. A few months ago, we had the first group that was, that was contracted into by the city to provide services. Looking at the numbers and the data that's been provided to us, it appears to be making an impact. And now we're going to continue reaching out to the homeless with Volunteers of America. And from what I read, that'll be addressing perhaps a different type of need of clientele that is homeless. So I'm excited that we continue to find more and more ways to reach out and help those who are in need. And for those people who attack the mayor, attack the city, attack the Police Department for not caring about the homeless and not doing anything, I challenge you to pay better attention so you know exactly what we're doing and how much money is being spent. Because tremendous effort is being made through various levels to reach out and help our homeless population where they are. No one turns a blind eye to the need. So I'm excited about the fact that we're going into this next venture with Volunteers of America and look forward to how it's going to help our citizens. Thank you.
You, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to applaud the staff and everyone else who's involved in this project, bringing in Volunteers of America to help us out on it. The preliminary numbers that I'm seeing that are in conjunction with another nonprofit group is greatly assisting the Police Department. So this just is augmentation to that assistance that we're seeing for the calls for service. So we don't have so many officers out there taking care of the calls for service that are not emergency calls. So I just want to applaud Volunteers of America for joining in on this project. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this question's for you, for, for our city attorney, or who. First of all, this agreement's for one year, correct?
Correct.
To kind of, and after one year, we evaluate it. Can you share kind of what, what basis, how do we know we're doing well with this contract? Meaning, at the end of the year, when we evaluate it, what, what factors will we consider success?
I'll start off the answer by saying that with the various nonprofits we're engaging with, we would measure success by the reduction of calls for service that our police and fire departments have to take. Early on, with the first nonprofit organization, we've experienced a promising reduction in calls for service. And so when Volunteers of America gets up and running, their focus is going to be more on emergency housing and case management related to that housing. And so we will have a set of criteria to gauge its success. And so by budget time later in 2022, we would be reporting back on those and deciding if we wanted to go forward with another year of this or what the best options are at that point.
Yeah, so if you wouldn't mind, when that year comes up, maybe provide a memo or, or an update to the council that says whether you recommend moving forward or not and the reasons why or why not. I think that'll be, be helpful and help, help us understand whether this is fruitful or not.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm done.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of Item 17. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us through our consent calendar. Now into non-consent items, 38 through 48. Open public comment on those items, 38 through 48. We have a couple of speaker requests. One is by Chuck Henry.
First time I, first time I wasn't ready. Okay. When looking at the wards recently, I'm seeing, me and Richard have been going back and forth on this. I've seen where Skyline Drive divides part of Ward 3 on the east side and the rest of them is on the west side of Skyline. Same thing with Ward 5. Part of it's on the east side of it, rest of it's on the west side of it. I think we need to span Ward 1, 2, and 4 to cover those areas and just have all Ward 3 and Ward 5 on the west side of Skyline. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker request is from David Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dave Holland, and I'm here representing the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association. On the issue of redrawing the wards and precinct maps, I think it's Item 43 in the agenda, our Neighborhood Association would like to urge the council to adopt Option 3. The West Boulevard Neighborhood Association is the oldest neighborhood association in South Dakota, having been founded in 1976. We're an active group, and we have done a lot over the years to foster a sense of community within our neighborhood and the city. The Neighborhood Association has contributed to the planting of the many trees you see along West Boulevard today. We've contributed money for the streetlights along West Boulevard, playground equipment at Wilson School, and the Christmas lights you see in Wilson Park. We've also adopted Wilson Park. Our group meets throughout the summer to tend the flowers and pick up trash in the park. We also sponsor the Wilson Park Festival in June and the Block Party in September. As you can see, we're an active group that believes in getting to know our neighbors and giving back to our community. And part of that effort requires the support of this City Council. We often reach out to Laura or Darla on issues that require collaboration with city staff. Our council representatives have helped us work with the city on the many construction projects and events in our neighborhood. To that end, it's convenient for our neighbor to have clear leadership that advocates for us and the City Council. And the only option before you today that keeps our neighborhood together in the same voting district is Option 3. I urge you to, to adopt Option 3. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's hard on phones. Good evening. I'm here talking a little bit about the redistricting as well. And I've been looking through the various maps. I did watch the legal and finance meeting. At that time, there was only one map, and that was Option 1. It seems that from observing the numbers, which is really what this is about, is making sure that, that the numbers come out right, the balance is much better in, in either 2 or 3. But I actually favor 2. And I can't understand why Ward 3 shows in 2 that there's a .02% change when the numbers are exactly the same as the numbers in Option 3, which shows a .1% change. So that's something that maybe I'll learn if there's a presentation or a discussion. During legal and finance, there was, there were several things that were said, some that I agreed with. Mr. Nordstrom said that during the last redistricting, there was a representative from every ward on the committee. And I really thought that was probably a better idea than just having one person from the council itself on the committee. There was also an idea that as you navigate through this, that you create a type of guideline or some sort of handbook, if you will, for the, in 10 years when there's probably going to be different people in these seats. So this is, this is a difficult, a difficult process. I was a little bit involved in the statewide redistricting. I had a front row seat, I guess that's the way I should put it. And, and I am interested to know when the public can come and just give general observations on the different plans. The three minutes of the microphone, you may or may not know what I'm referring to. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the speakers for these items, so that'll close the public comment period. We'll start off on the agenda with Item 38 under ordinances. First reading, Ordinance 6523 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Shane Boyham for a rezoning request from Office Commercial to Medium Density Residential District. The property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Wesleyan Boulevard and Plaza Boulevard. Motion approved by Roberts. Second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 39, first reading, Ordinance 6524 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC for rezoning request from General Agricultural District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Valley Drive. And the recommendation is to approve in conjunction with the planned development designation. Okay, we have that motion from Pat Jones and a second by John Roberts. We'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In reading the paperwork on this one, it was exciting to, to read it and see that it's going to be not just one kind of housing. It's not going to be just apartments or just dwellings. But it, there's going to be single-family homes and, and apartments and all different kinds of income levels of housing, which we know our city greatly needs. We've heard the term affordable housing being tossed around for months and months and months. And this project, along with others, is doing things to address that. And it's, it's nice to see that this kind of project's going to come forward and meet the needs of a lot of people in Rapid City, not just one certain income group. So I'm happy to see that from the developer and hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Okay. And so we have a motion on 39 to approve in conjunction with the planned development. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 40, first reading, Ordinance 6525 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC for a rezoning request from General Agricultural District to General Commercial District for property described as being located northeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Valley Drive. And again, the recommendation is to approve in conjunction with the planned development designation. Okay, we have Jason Solomon making that motion and a second by Pat Jones. All in favor of approving Item 40, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 41, first reading, Ordinance 6526 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC for a rezoning request from General Agricultural District to General Commercial District for property generally, generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Valley Drive. The recommendation is to approve in conjunction with the planned development designation. Motion by Nordstrom to approve. Second by Darla Drew. All in favor of approval of Item 41, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42, first reading, Ordinance 6527 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC for a rezoning request from General Agricultural District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Valley Drive. Recommendation is to approve in conjunction with a planned development designation. Okay, motion by Pat Jones. Second by Richie Nordstrom. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Yeah, I have a question for Vicki Fisher, Community Development, please.
Okay.
I think Vicki can easily answer this question, but I, I don't quite understand the planned development designation. Does that include green space? I mean, we are taking out all kinds of green space here. And we're putting out houses that are in apartments that are very needed. But is there any expectation of parkland or some kind of green space being saved from, from all this development for the enjoyment of future generations?
Vicki Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a part of a master plan.
So this is a part of a master plan that's been submitted by this applicant, and we know it as Shepherd Hills and Diamond Ridge.
Right.
And as a part of that, this developer is working with the school to secure a location that will have school opportunities for all of these families that will be moving into the area, and that location is such that with that playground, it will meet many of the needs and expectations. In addition, as we lay these out, and one of the reasons that it is within a planned development is that we do have that open space and separation so that hopefully every residence has an area on every lot that children can play, and that is the intent, and this developer in particular has taken great strides to ensure that that be brought forward as a part of the master plan. Great question.
I think that that's a great idea for their yards and that kind of thing, but I'm more concerned as we're going through this incredible growth, that maybe this council and your department work together at coming up with an actual requirement for so much green space for every acre you take up or whatever, you know, ten acres, whatever it is, five miles, you know, it's up to us to decide what it is, but I'd almost like to see something come forward that would guarantee some green space. I just think it's important for children and also for just everybody's mental health, and so that's what I'd like to see maybe going forward at some point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, in two thousand, we did bring a proposal similar to that before the City Council at that time, and it's really when Red Rocks was getting started. And idea then, too, was potentially, if we're looking at a forty-acre parcel and you're going to be subdividing it out, that there at least needs to be a pocket park.
Yeah.
And at that time, we were working with the Public Works Director to see if this is something that would be maintained by the city. Would it be homeowner association maintain? It fell flat before that council, so it's refreshing to hear that there may be some of you sitting here today that would allow us to go back and revisit that. Not all of the developers will take into consideration that play area that needs to be provided, as this developer has, so we need to have a requirement in place, and certainly we can work with some of the developers and come up with a draft and present it to you for discussion.
Well, we know as a group that if this is all, when all these apartments and all these things get done, you can't go back and make that into a play area or a park area. And I don't really consider a school a park for the kids. I know it is, you know, but I don't consider that part of our parkland, per se. So I just think it's something really worth considering at this point. Thank you. I yield.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Director Fisher, please.
Yes.
The question I have on the green space that's being promoted here tonight is, is the landscaping ordinance any conjunction with this, or does that fit in with the projects that are coming forward or what Councilman Drew is bringing about a concept about? So would that fit into this?
Mr. Mayor, so we are currently reviewing the landscape regulations. Currently, landscape regulations don't apply to single-family or two-family unit development. Obviously, if you've got a yard, it has to have some type of erosion control, but that doesn't even need to be grass. If the property owner wanted to rock it or gravel it, they could. In this instance, and one of the reasons why this is within a planned development, is that there is a mix of housing. If there is an apartment development, they must provide four hundred square foot of open space for every unit. It must be on that lot, and our planning commission is doing a fantastic job ensuring that there is a constructed playground, clubhouse, swimming pool, or a combination thereof on every one of those apartment developments.
Thank you. That helps. On item forty-two, we have a motion to approve in conjunction with the planned development designation. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Item forty-three, first reading of ordinance six-five-two-eight, and ordinance repealing chapter one-point-zero-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts, and adopting a new revised chapter one-point-zero-eight, and the recommendation is to send a council without recommendation. I'll open the bidding. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you were at the legal and finance committee meeting, you will remember that option one is what was shown there. We discussed a little bit at that meeting that we made changes from a different option to include West Boulevard all in one ward. That, one, pre-combining, is option two. I got very limited feedback on where lines, people would like to see the lines, and so with the feedback I did get, and thank you very much, we came up with option three, which would put West Boulevard back in Ward Five and also make some of the boundaries similar to what they are today. I was also asked why we have to redraw the lines and why can't we just use the lines that we currently have. Good question, and it really comes down to the numbers. And so we looked at approximately what twenty-twenty numbers would look like in the current boundary lines, and Wards Two, Three, and Four, very usually, you could have left those alone, wouldn't have had to touch them. However, Ward One increased by eleven-point-seven percent, and Ward Five decreased from the median, the variance, from nine point to nine-point-four, nine-point-four-seven. So that total variance is over twenty percent, and we have to be within ten percent. So that is why the shifting had to take place, is because of those Ward One and Ward Five population shifts. I know I sent out the ward maps, they are attached. I'd be happy to answer questions on those. If you guys need any additional information, I'd be happy to provide that. If you have questions, please, I'm here for you guys.
Okay, Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve option three and keep the floor, if I can get a second.
Second by Lehman. Go ahead.
Thank you. So based on what we've heard tonight, based on the need to not make it difficult for voters to vote, you would never want to be part of a government entity that makes it harder for voters to vote than it is right now, and to sustain or support West Boulevard and other reasons of kind of managing that fourteen thousand number of voters, I think this is the right one to go with and support item, option number three, as being our best option to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, and Pauline, I want to thank you for listening to the feedback and providing more options for us to review. I do appreciate that. Is, you know, we heard from Ms. Weaver that we want to perhaps explore public feedback. Is essentially, are we going to have any separate sessions for public input, or is that essentially what the ordinance approval process is working? What, I guess, what was our plan with that?
The plan was, and that plan can always change, was to have that time during the first and second reading of the ordinances.
Okay. As well as the committee meetings, perhaps, imagine the second, like, for example, if this passes tonight, we'll have a second reading that'll go through legal and finance, and then, so we would have four opportunities?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's important, to make sure that we're hearing from the public, and I do appreciate the West Boulevard folks. Certainly have heard from them. I agree that they should be kept together one way or the other. I'm happy to represent them in Ward Three, but I also understand we need to distribute this evenly, and so I favor option three as well. While it's not exactly how I would draw it, when you're trying to get consensus with everybody up here, I like, what I like is that it distributes the population more evenly. I think that's more fair for representation for everybody. So I think of the three options that we have, that's the one I support, so I plan to support that tonight. Thank you.
If I might tag on to that, this option, the total variance between the highest and the lowest populations is one-point-five percent, which is better than option one, but a little less, a tiny little bit less than option two. Adam and I played with boundaries with the feedback we had, putting all of that peninsula that used to be Ward Five back into Ward Five, was it almost three thousand people, and moving the boundary for Ward Three back up to Cannon Lake, all the way across Cannon Lake Drive, that was fifteen hundred, so that didn't work. So this is the compromise that we came up with to do that.
Thank you. I'll go to Darla Drew.
Just more of a comment than a question for you, Pauline. If you think people aren't paying attention to what's going on in City Hall, try to change their boundaries in their ward. Boy, did I hear from a lot of people. Maybe they're asleep at the wheel for the state stuff, but in Rapid City, everybody is awake, and they're looking at this, and I heard so many of my constituents say, "We want option number three." They really liked that a lot. And just as a person that's lived in that ward all my life, I have seen so many new families moving in there as it kind of repopulates to younger families, so I would see that we would have a big population swing probably within the next ten years, as the older folks leave and the younger families move in. So I just, I thank you for the work you've done on this because it made it easier for me to say yes to option three tonight. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Pauline, again, to you and your group that put together, Mayor, the appointments that you made to this committee that was making up this, maps, drawing up the lines and everything, and so just want to reiterate my suggestion for next time around is to encourage that a council member from each ward be involved in the process. So that's my encouragement. The, a couple of other things that I, the reason why I'm supporting Ward Three, excuse me, option three, excuse me, is that the primary reason has to do with the voters down in the West Boulevard area. If we stayed with option one, that would cause a lot of people to go around the hill to vote at Jackson Heights if the polling places stay the same, whereas they're used to going to West Park Apartments. So that's the primary reason why I was concerned about that area. The other suggestion is for the West Boulevard group, you're going to be moving over into, next to Fifth Street as well, taking up some of what used to be in Ward Two. So I would encourage you to get together with Mount Rushmore Road Group and bring in Ward, the people that used to be in Ward Five. Then, the other thing that's of interest to me is that I'm going to be in a different precinct. I'm going to be in precinct two-five instead of two-four, so that's a whole new change or dynamic for me that I'm going to have to get used to. So just a few suggestions, and I applaud everyone's work on coming up with option three, so that's what I'm going to be supporting. Thank you, Mayor.
Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Pauline and all the people that worked on this and coming up with these different options. I agree that option three is the best option that we have available to us. I think it makes sense geographically. Numbers-wise, it also makes sense, and when we hear from citizens like Mr. Holland from the West Boulevard Association, that's important, too, and I think that there's a cohesiveness there, and I think there's a rapport with the current council people that represent Ward Five, that I just think that we should try to sustain that if we can. I think that that's a fairly unique area in Rapid City, and I think that option three is the best option available to us, so I'll support option three. I yield.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Holland and the West Boulevard group for taking charge of your community down there. It's beautiful to drive through there, and I really love Wilson Park, and I think a lot of us up here really like the parks, and it's nice when you can get a community together and just take the neighborhood over and, you know, watch what's going on in your neighborhood, take care of the trash, take care of things, you know, we're not getting into a broken window syndrome there. Listening to my colleagues on Three and Five, I think that option three makes sense. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and with my remaining time, just to get on the minutes, because what I think is important is the process with this, and Richie, I appreciate your comments. So I think for the next go-around, if we could have it in the minutes so that future council mayor can review and say, "What lessons did they learn?" For one, the first lesson we learned is who should be on the committee, and I think we put a committee together well in advance with city officials, a representative from each ward, as well as the mayor, I'm fine with that, but to make sure we establish who that committee is going to be, and it should probably include the City Council. Two, that we provide clear and stated goals for the process that the City Council can agree on and that the public can also review and understand so that everybody knows what we're going after. And then, and then, three, make sure that it's presented in a timely manner so that you aren't having to make a quick decision, at least as quick as you, we have, for example, we need to get this done so that folks can decide where they live and where they can run, beginning of March when they're getting signatures for the upcoming election, so it was important for us to kind of get this nailed down. So I think in the future, having the right committee members in place, a clear process, stated goals, and regular updates throughout, if we put that kind of in writing right now so that future councils can do that, it doesn't have to have as much heartache. Not that this had really a lot of heartache. Honestly, it worked out fine, but these things can get real political real fast, and we have enough drama to add any extra to our plate. So I just want to make sure that's kind of written down, just as feedback for future council members, and because at the end of the day, it's the council that will make this decision. But I do like having great city staff and GIS and people like that on the committee, obviously, but you're trying to make it as fair and even as possible, so, and of course, those are my suggestions. The other council members may have items as well. Just want to make sure we get that kind of on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be for legal, for Mr. Landin.
Yes.
Does this need to come forward as a resolution in the future when we want to put something in place for a future council? Would it be a resolution, or would you suggest some other approach? For a guideline on how we, you know, for the...
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think you could do a resolution. The problem is, can be when nobody sitting on the dais right now is here in ten years, are they going to even remember there's a resolution somewhere that spells it out? Certainly, the council could also change that resolution and do something different at that time, but I suppose if they at least knew there was a resolution there, it would cause them to look at it and decide, or at least have more of a discussion maybe earlier about what the process should look like. So, I mean, I think it's an option. I don't know how beneficial it'll be in ten years. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes, Pauline.
I just want to say, one of the reasons why there was a delay in getting this is because we did wait for the state to draw their legislative districts. It's very important to the county who does our elections for us that we don't have split ballots in precincts, and so without knowing what those legislative boundaries were, we would not be able to determine where our ward and precinct boundaries should be to prevent that from happening. The second thing is, I'm all for something in writing, so ten years down the road, whoever is here will have some kind of guide. I will tell you, I probably won't be here in ten years, and I told legal and finance that, too, and this is the third time I've done this in my career, and each time it's been a little different. And so something in writing, some kind of guide, is most welcomed, I'm sure, by those that follow.
Okay. Thank you. Bill Evans.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that I believe option three is obviously the best of all of them in this case, but I agree with the comments made by Chuck and by Ms. Weaver earlier. I really find it odd that for something that's going to last for ten years, we've been given exactly five days to gestate on this. There's been virtually no input from the people. It's not enough time, and I don't understand what the rush is to vote tonight. I understand we have... I understand we have things coming up, but I think another two weeks of gestation and comment would be advised for something that is in place for 10 years. As far as the West Boulevard thing goes, I firmly believe that West Boulevard, that whole area should be included with the areas in Ward Two that have similar problems. I see there's a spiral that kind of doesn't happen, where parts of Ward Three could be shifted farther to the east, which includes voters that have similar issues to the ones farther to the west. And voters south of parts of Ward Five are certainly more matching the problems in those areas than are rounding the hill and grabbing West Boulevard. There are very few alleys that I know of west of the gap, and yet, you're dividing this entire constituency that has problems with alleyways, garbage collection related to it, utilities that are related having alleys, and I don't understand the reason for dividing these neighborhoods that are older in half down Fifth Street. It doesn't make any sense in terms of representing the population, because an alley is not a concern for people in Prydale Heights. It is a concern to people on both sides of Fifth Street. So, I think it's illogical, and I don't understand how that comes about. So, I will probably, since it looks like number three is going to pass, I'm probably just going to impose it again on principle, because I do not think there's been enough discussion of this, and I wish we could have tabled that, and I might have made that suggestion had I been there in person tonight. Thank you.
The motion on the table is to approve option three. Remember, this is first reading of this ordinance. The next council meeting in a couple of weeks will be a second reading. And so, now we'll go to a roll call vote on this item.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Nope.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Strowman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion passes for option three, nine to one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Under community development items, item 44, request by KTM Design Solutions for Murphy Brothers Partnership LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot 11 and 12 of Block One, lots 1 through 72 and drainage lot 1 of Block 15, lots 1 through 33 and drainage lot 3 of Block 16, lots 1 through 23 and drainage lot 2 of Block 17, lots 1 through 10 and lot D revised of Block 18, and dedicated public right-of-way of Murphy Ranch Estates subdivision, property generally described as being located southeast of Longview Road and Reservoir Road. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Lehman to approve a stipulation, second by Roberts. We'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to abstain from this one. Thank you.
Okay. Darla Drew.
Sorry, I'm going to be showing a little bit of my ignorance on this, but is this saying that we pay for it, or they're just asking a request to do it? Is that what, what does that mean? What does this mean? I guess Vicki Fisher might be able to tell us.
Vicki Fisher, go ahead.
I'm not sure if I understand the question, but the item on the agenda is to create 141 residential lots.
Uh-huh.
The developer will bring in all of that infrastructure. It will be a phased development, and the exciting news is, is that this will provide a connection onto South Dakota 44 through Murphy Ranch up to Longview, where you no longer have to meander down Reservoir Road, through those residential streets, down Longview, and go into Murphy Ranch at the north end. So, we've been waiting for this connection for a long time.
Okay. I really did not understand the fine points of this at all, so thank you, Vicki.
Yes.
Okay, motion on the floor for item 44 is to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Item 45, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC, oh, I'm sorry, on item 44, we'll note that Ron Wyffenbach abstained. Sorry about that. On item 45, request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Capital LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot three of Block Six, lot one and two of Block Seven, lot one and drainage lot of Block Eight, lot one and two of Block Nine, lot one and drainage lot of Block 10 of Shepherd Hills South Subdivision, and lots 17 and 18 of Block Seven, lots 29 and 30 of Block Three of Diamond Ridge Subdivision, generally described as being located mostly northeast of the intersection of Mickelson Drive and East Anamosa Street. And again, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Roberts to approve a stipulation, second by Lehman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item 46, request by KTM Design Solutions for U.S. Hotel and Resort Management for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot F1 and lot F2 of Buffalo Crossing West, generally described as being located at 1920 Hope Court. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Solomon and a second by Roberts to approve a stipulation. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 47, a request by baseline surveying for Cameron Fullerton for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots one and two of Rushmore Candy Acres, generally described as being located at 9815 South Highway 16. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Lehman and a second by Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 48, a request by baseline surveying for Gordon Howey for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots four, five, and drainage lot one of Trailwood Village, generally described as being located northwest of the intersection of Reservoir Road and Longview Road. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Drew and a second by Pat Jones. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Down to public hearing items, 49 through 51, there are no speakers on these items, so we'll go directly to the consent, public hearing items, 49 through 51. Council like to remove any of these or approve them all at once? Motion by Roberts to approve items 49 through 51, and a second by Solomon, I think. Okay? And so, motion to approve items 49 through 51. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 52 of the bill list for January 18th, 2022, we'll go to Finance Director Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that, which is attached at
Motion to approve, Solomon.
Second.
Second, Roberts. All in favor of approving the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Lehman.
Second.
Second by everyone else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, everyone. Thank you.
You are the last party in the conference. You will hear silence until the conference begins.